Before the town meeting begins, I am going to read a proclamation for St. Mark's Protestant Episcopal Church's 150th anniversary. Whereas St. Mark's Protestant Episcopal Church was founded on April 25th, 1864, the same day as St. Mark's Day, and whereas St. Mark's is listed in the National Register of Historic Places and is located in the Historic Ridge District at 1509 Ridge Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, and whereas St. Mark's is the oldest Episcopal Church on the North Shore and the founding church of St. Matthews, St. Luke's, and St. Augustine's, and whereas, under the guidance of the Second Century Committee, to restore what is essential and to add what is good, the church sanctuary was completely restored, beginning in 1994 and ending in 2006, and whereas St. Mark's celebrates its sesquicentennial year on St. Mark's Day, 2014, and whereas, as St. Mark's enters its 150th year, its motto is "Being in Place, Growing in Faith, Living from the Center." Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014, as St. Mark's Day in the City of Evanston in honor of their 150th anniversary. Would you please come forward and take the proclamation?
This is that comment, Ted. You can't take pictures.
Anyone else?
Okay, we're grabbing flowers.
This time, I'm calling the... At this time, I'm calling the township meeting to order. No, 8:45. The annual town meeting, Tuesday, April 8th, 2014, 7:00 PM, City Council Chamber, second floor, 2100 Ridge Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, 60201. In order to expedite the meeting, starting on time... Should've done this earlier. Need to check, make sure that everybody who's here is a registered voter of Evanston. Need to allow time to verify those who signed up as residents. Once this is accomplished, the transaction of miscellaneous business of the said town and after moderator have been elected, we'll proceed to hear and consider reports of offices and decide on which measures is made in pursuance of law come before the meeting, and especially to consider and decide on the following. The agenda should be in your hands now, but if you don't have it, I'll read it out. Number one, we'll call to order town clerk. We'll announce the legal notification publication in the newspaper. We'll do nomination and election of moderator, Minister of the Oath, approval of minutes of 2013, do a financial report, annual report, citizen comments, then a motion to... Forget that one. Then other business, and then adjournment. Right now, I'd like to give you the groundwork for what the moderator will and will not do. Once moderator is appointed to come up and sit in the dais, then moderator is the one who orchestrates the meeting. Moderator has no vote. Moderator has no comments. Moderator is just here to make sure that things run by the way the agenda is going. Any questions so far? So, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for moderator. It does not have to be an elected official. It could be from anybody from the floor.
I nominate Liz Tisdale.
I second.
Liz Tisdale's been nominated, and seconded. Is there any others from the floor?
Where's the event?
Yes?
I can nominate someone?
Yes, you can.
Oh, okay.
This is a town meeting, so everybody's... Are you an elected official in... I mean, are you a resident in Evanston? Your name, please?
Joyce Borsati.
Joyce Borsati. Which ward are you in?
Which ward?
Yes.
Ward. Oh, I think six.
Sixth ward. That was Joyce. Last name again?
Borsati with a B.
Borsati. I'm roasting up here.
Can I nominate two people?
You can only do one. Okay.
Do you have a call?
Nomination.
Robert Tendem.
Bob Tendem. Robert Tendem. Mark Tendem. You almost had me say it too.
I'm sorry. How do you spell your name?
B with a B.
Yeah.
B-O-R-S-O-T-T-I.
Okay.
Second nomination is Mark Tendem. Is there a second on that? Are there any other nominations from the floor? You can give your nomination to somebody else if you want them to do it for you.
Are you standing or... Oh, yes, Miss Rainey. I'm sorry.
I'll move the nominations to be closed as the township supervisor.
But probably move the second, that the township nomination be closed for the moderator. The... We're going with the first, my first nomination first, which was Liz Tisdale as the moderator for today. Can I see a hand of those who would go for Liz Tisdale as the moderator? Can I get somebody to do a head count for me?
30. 30.
All those in favor of Mark Tendem? Let me see your hands, please.
For Mark Tendem. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17.
18, because there's one out in the...
I counted that. Well, 17.
So, it seems that Liz Tisdale gets the 30 count. She is now...
Does that mean I can quit looking through this?
Yes, you can. Can I have you stand and raise your right hand, please?
I'm sure you're in here, but it's done by precinct.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Liz Tisdale...
I, Liz Tisdale.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge and impartially discharge duties of moderator...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of moderator.
...at this town meeting, so help to God.
At this town meeting, so help me God.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is now turned over to the moderator to come to follow with the... Thank you, Dar. To follow with the agenda.
All right. Have you announced the legal notice?
No.
Town clerk, would you announce the legal notice publication?
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Liz Tisdale...
I, Liz Tisdale.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge and impartially discharge duties of moderator... ...at this town meeting, so help to God.
...at this town meeting, so help me God.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is now turned over to the moderator to come to follow with the... Thank you, Dar. To follow with the agenda.
All right. Have you announced the legal notice? Town clerk, would you announce the legal notice publication?
Okay. There, boy.
While you're looking for it, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 2013 annual town meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any changes? Ms. Esther.
Is that story really supposed to have green letters, K-I instead of C-H-I?
Where is that? Second page of the minutes?
Yeah.
AKA, is that what you're referring to? Yeah.
Oh, that's Alpha Cap Alpha, President.
Delta Chi, Chi is Delta.
Oh.
Yeah.
What?
Oh, I see it. Okay. We'll accept that correction. Thank you.
That has been corrected.
Kyle Omega. Oh, it's not Kyle Omega. Okay. All right.
All right.
I cannot...
Would that change? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Opposed? What? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Esther, I didn't...
I think he heard what the changes was. What did he want to change in these minutes? So, I suppose, we thought that was fine. So, every page that he wanted changed...
Karen, could you...
Page 2, third paragraph, second paragraph. Page 2, second paragraph.
Another page 2, the paragraph that says, the AKA President of the Delta Chi Omega Chapter. The word Chi is... The letter Chi is misstelled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The legal notice? Okay. Town clerk, next agenda item is the financial report.
Okay. I'll believe it. Here we are. I'm gonna give a brief Reader's Digest version of the town report. The financial report stands that the township is in good standing. They're in the... Black, red. When you're good, it's in the red.
Black.
In the black, I'm sorry. They're in the black. They have not gone over the budget. And from reports that were given from the audit, the audit report came in favoring the township's budget for this 2013-2014 annual year. That's the short version. It will be online if you need to see it, according with... Along with the other minutes of the township for this evening.
Thank you very much, Clerk Green. Next is the annual report from the town supervisor, Mr. Bobkowitz.
Madam Moderator, members of the town board and the assembled electors, I have been privileged to serve as the township supervisor since last October. We have made, I think, great strides in providing the municipal services under the supervisor's responsibility, most notably our General Assistance Program. Ivana Thomas Smith, who serves as Director of Health for the City of Evanston, has been responsible for the day-to-day operations of our General Assistance Program. I'd like to ask Ms. Thomas Smith to step forward and give a brief report. I'd also like to recognize Henry Colquit from the township staff who's here. Henry, thank you for your fine work during this past year. Ms. Thomas Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Ivana Thomas Smith, Health Director. I have my honor to serve as the interim director for the township, supporting the staff to assure that we provide efficient services for our general assistance clients. What we have been successful in doing is assuring that all of the participants of the General Assistance Program had access to Affordable Care Act enrollment, county care enrollment, and were actually provided an opportunity to visit the Erie Family Health Center and actually speak with the physician that would be their provider if they engaged in primary care at that site. We also were successful in assuring that general assistance clients also had access to pharmacy discount programming, which was kind of different than how we operated our medication services before. And I'm glad to say that I was able to meet with the participants of the General Assistance Program in a town hall meeting, if you will, a couple of weeks ago, and actually spent time explaining what the transition would mean, how services would be carried out, and what would be expected of staff going forward. And I'm happy to report that many of the participants had really fantastic questions of concern. Clarity was given, and I think they walked away feeling solid that services would be carried out in an efficient and effective way. And it was a really, really gracious meeting and a time for me to actually engage on a personal level with the participants of the program. I'm looking forward to continuing providing support for this program and still looking at ways of partnership. We've also been approached in partnership to instill some financial literacy workshops. We will be restoring Job Club and assuring that job readiness skills are available for our clients. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Thomas Smith.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, members of the town assembled, as you all know, there was a municipal election on March the 18th regarding the dissolution of Evanston Township. We have received today from the Cook County Clerk the certification of that election. Votes in favor of dissolution were 5,065. Votes against dissolution were 2,889. That's 63.68 percent for, 36.32 percent against. So, through the language of the initiative and the laws of the state of Illinois, Evanston Township has now been dissolved under this vote. I'm recommending to the town board, as well as the city council, that actions be taken at a town board meeting on March the 20... Excuse me, April the 28th, to formally close operations of the township, effective on May the 1st. The city council on its agenda this evening has two ordinances, which would hopefully receive first reading this evening, and then the city council would then also take action on April 28th, so that those actions would then conclude the business of the township and, beginning on May the 1st, the responsibilities of the township under state law in Evanston would be those within the City of Evanston. So, madam moderator, thank you for the opportunity to serve as township supervisor. We will do our best as staff to make the transition of services to the City of Evanston as the month concludes and the township is dissolved.
Thank you very much, town supervisor. Next is the annual report of the fabulous town assessor, the Honorable Bonnie Wilson.
You're here.
Thank you, Moderator Tisdale and trustees. It's an honor to speak to you tonight. When I took office in January 1st, 2010, as the Evanston Township Assessor, I promised that I would be an advocate for the taxpayers of Evanston. There was a lot I needed to do to make sure taxpayers got the services they deserve. As you would expect, usual issues were exemptions, taxpayers did not receive square footage measurements that were wrong, and support for appeals. However, there were larger issues I faced as well. I want to report that, as the Evanston Township Assessor, for the past four and a half years, I effectively addressed four major issues. First, there was the permit issue when I first took office. I was told by the Cook County Assessor's Permit Department that not all permits were being sent to their office by the previous assessor or the City of Evanston. Permits were missing. This issue was resolved. Both the city and my office are making sure that all permits are being sent to the county in a timely manner. Formerly, they were mailed. We now send these permits electronically to the county permit department. We do this through the Assessor Information Managing Program, the AIM Program. The benefits of the AIM Program relates to a second issue I addressed, updating and correcting our data information. The AIM Data Program is vital to this office. This program contains important records on each property in Evanston. We can fill out exemption forms for the taxpayer, which automatically fills in their PIN number, name, and address. We can do appeals on this program by looking at PIN numbers, giving us the other properties in the same neighborhood with comparable lot size and square footage. We can see if the PIN number locations found have assessments equal to other properties in the neighborhood. The AIM Program also allows us to input mandated permits and transfer real estate declarations. There is another software program called Sidwell Maps. This program shows the location of each PIN number in Evanston. For instance, we had a taxpayer come into our office last week whose house was next to a vacant lot. The taxpayer needed to know the PIN number of that lot so they could contact the owner. Sidwell Maps made that possible. When I first took office, I found out that a vital program called the AS400 was not installed in the assessor's office. This program has been critical for learning the history of each property in Evanston. It gave us information on when properties were taken... Permits were taken out, when the properties were measured, who filled out the senior exemption, and it tells when the property... When the homeowner gets homeowner's exemptions, plus providing other valuable information. If we did not have this program, I would not have caught a major error in some 2010 assessments. The original square footage of some homes had been doubled prior to the square footage of recent additions being added to the property record. This mistake caused major valuation errors countywide in an over 40 properties in Evanston. As a result of this discovery, the Cook County Assessor's Office sent corrected assessments and property descriptions to all affected taxpayers. An average of 1,600 people signed into our office each year, and one year alone, we saved the taxpayers of Evanston over $420,000, either in missed exemptions or over assessments on their property. The third major issue I addressed was being informed as the assessor advocate and get a needed information to the taxpayer. For the last four and a half years, I attended monthly meetings held by the Cook County Assessor's Association. These meetings were held in Countryside and now in Oak Brook. They had speakers come from all departments of Cook County, from the Board of Review, the assessor's office, the permit department, and even from the Recorder of Deeds. These meetings were very helpful in learning up-to-date information. We also learned what other assessors were doing to help the taxpayers. Because these meetings were only open to the Cook County Township Assessors, Evanston will no longer have access to this information. I work closely with a liaison person from the Cook County Assessor's Office, Jan Zabo. She sends us emails at least three or four times a month with up-to-date information, when exemptions were sent to the taxpayers, copies of these exemptions, when townships were opened for appeals, and when they were to close, and other very important information. Right now, all the Cook County Township Assessors are on her mailing list. I am not sure how we will be informed regarding all this information if we are not on that mailing list. Every December 1st, I attended the Township of Illinois Conference in Springfield. Since we are no longer a township, no one from Evanston will be attending this conference. There were workshops for the township assessors, clerks, and supervisors. I learned a lot by going to these workshops that I brought back to our community. While I was assessor, I was constantly out in the community talking to taxpayers about our services. I attended ward meetings, senior meetings at the Levy Center. I spoke at real estate offices to give the realtors up-to-date information on exemptions for their buyers and sellers. Each month, I attended the Evanston Human Services Committee meetings and city council meetings that gave the trustees up-to-date information they could pass on to their constituents. I also held tax seminars with Commissioner Larry Sufferton's office each time Evanston was open for appeals, either through the Cook County Assessor's Office or the Board of Review. We received numerous calls from real estate attorneys and real estate brokers whose clients were ready to sell or buy a home. We can answer their questions quickly. Now, if they have to call the assessor's office, they will likely wait for hours on the phone. In a cost-saving measure this past September, the township moved to the Civic Center. Our office is much nicer than the office on Dodge. The taxpayers currently use the Civic Center as a one-stop shop. When they are paying their electric or city sticker bills, they also come to the assessor's office to fill out their exemption and appeal forms. I think we might be getting more people to come in our office than we did when we were on Dodge in Maine. However, it did take a while for the average taxpayer to know we had moved to the Civic Center. I am hoping in the future that more taxpayers know where we are and continue to use our services. I would urge the city to use its vast toolbox of communication to help keep residents informed of these vital services. I would also like to make a request that the taxpayer advocate be easy to find. I hope that the office continues to be on the first floor. It is much easier for seniors and the disabled to come to our office as we are right off the elevators. The fourth major issue I addressed was the staffing of my office. The staff I hired to run this office have been efficient, experienced, and capable of handling all the questions from the taxpayers of Evanston. They have saved the taxpayers money and made sure they received the exemptions they were entitled to receive. They also answered many other questions regarding their assessments. On February 3rd, I hired Mitzi Gibbs, sitting over here, as my deputy assessor. Would you like to stand? Mitzi is competent, efficient, and capable of handling the taxpayer's question. If she does not know the answer to her question and I'm not in the office, she will call the treasurer or assessor's office until she gets the answer she needs. In the few months she has been here, I have gotten compliments about her at least three or four times a week. Mitzi already has a relationship with both the head of the Departments of the Assessor's Branch Office in Skokie and the Assessor's Office in Chicago. She is also very organized and has been trained on both the AS400 and the AIM Program. She is self-motivated and manages the office effectively. She is kind, patient, and considerate to all the taxpayers who come into the office. Last week, I received an email from a taxpayer who had visited the office to let me know how effective Mitzi was and how glad she was that I had hired her. Mitzi's background is in finance and real estate. She understands how important it is for the taxpayers of Evanston to be fairly assessed. I strongly recommend that Mitzi be hired by the City of Evanston to be the next taxpayer advocate for our community. I just want you to know that in one week, in the last seven business days, Mitzi alone saw 71 people come into our office. Mitzi's background is in finance and real estate. She understands how important it is for the taxpayer of Evanston to be fairly assessed. I strongly recommend that Mitzi be hired by the City of Evanston to be the next taxpayer advocate for our community. Yes, I am deeply disappointed that Evanston Township will be dissolved at the end of this month. My hope is that the City of Evanston will continue to provide the same level of services that I and my staff have provided to the taxpayers of Evanston these four and a half years. Seniors could lose their homes if we do not continue to help them with their senior exemptions, and especially those applying for a senior freeze. Many times, the county assessor makes a mistake assessing homes in Evanston. We work closely with sellers and their agents to make sure their homes are assessed fairly. If the assessment seems out of line, we make sure the assessments are corrected and they have filed for the proper exemptions. We want to keep the buyers coming to Evanston to buy their new home. After May 1st, I will continue to work in this community as a real estate broker, as I have done since 1985. I will also be a lot smarter in knowing how I can better educate my buyers and sellers on the assessments of their homes. I will make sure that everyone receives the homeowner's exemptions and senior exemption that they are entitled to receive. It has been a privilege and an honor to be your assessor. I have met some wonderful people in this community during my tenure. Thank you for voting for me and giving me this opportunity to help the taxpayers of Evanston and be their advocate. I want to say thank you to the Township General Assistance Staff. Henry, it has been... It's been a pleasure working with Henry, Val, and Carmen. They were so supportive during my years as assessor, especially at the beginning, when I first came into office. Rodney, you have been terrific and fun to work with. You always had my back. Wally, Ivana, and Marty, I just got to know you these last few months. Thank you all for your support during my stay at the Civic Center. Last, of course, I would not be standing here tonight if it was not for the untimely passing of Sharon Equisaw. I know Sharon would also have been disappointed that the township has been dissolved. Thank you again, and I hope that the taxpayer advocate of Evanston will continue to be friends with you. funded by the City of Evanston for many, many, many years to come. I'm not done yet. I just got a call from the Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferton telling me that we're going to be open... The Cook County Assessor's Office is going to be open for appeals on Wednesday, April 16th. Larry Sufferton plans to have a tax seminar meeting. We were talking about April 28th, but I think that we might have to change that date. And I also want to let you know that there were 115 people signed up to do tax appeals starting next week. Speaking of Commissioner Sufferton, I asked Commissioner Sufferton this evening if he does plan to take over the duties of the assessor's office. He said he does not plan to take over the duties of the assessor's office, and that is up to the City of Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. You were not asked to run for this office. You were begged to run for this office by a community that was very wise to beg you because you've done a fabulous job. I have heard nothing but good things about people who were helped by your office. It is rare to have an office with no complaints, but you have managed to run one. So, the community is very, very grateful to you. You exemplify what people want in a public servant. So, on behalf of the Evanston community and the Evanston City Council, I have these for you with our great admiration and appreciation.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to say thank you to Bonnie for your service for the past four and a half years. Clearly, under your leadership, you established a structure and a professionalism at the assessor's office that had not been there previously. And the transparency with your office was remarkable, and I think we couldn't have moved forward without your leadership and the support of the community. So, again, thank you for your dedication to our community, and I know many people are already thinking of ways for you to volunteer. Don't take Tizadell's calls because you know she already has a list of stuff for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Tendem.
Thank you. Bonnie, this has been a tough thing for us because we are good friends, you're one of my best friends, and we've been at odds over this situation for quite a few years. But lately, as it became a reality, it did become difficult. But the kind of person that Bonnie Wilson is, is one that actually did manage and manage well a friendship with me during this whole process. We disagreed greatly about it, but that speaks to the kind of person she is, the type of integrity and loyalty she has, and she's a damn good Realtor, too. So, if you want those qualities in your Realtor, talk to Bonnie. I think you're at... What's the name? Berkshire Hathaway is the new firm.
Bonnie, we just want to say thank you from the Fifth Ward for coming to our ward meetings and informing our residents, and we really do appreciate the services that you provide.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I have a list of speakers, but it's also a town meeting, so I believe that everyone else should feel free to add their names to the list if you wish. Each speaker is limited to six minutes. Kevin Johnson, then Betty Esther and Madeleine Decray.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Johnson. I live in 1458 Chicago Avenue, and the reason why I'm speaking tonight...
Kevin, why don't we pass it out? Kevin, we'll pass it out.
So, one of the main reasons why I want to speak about this, this is a paper that talks about unemployment office. The clients used to be able to turn it in every six months. Now, they have to do it every 30 days. And what it is basically, it's like they have to go down to unemployment office, sit there and file for unemployment, and then turn around, wait for the manager to be able to sign off at the unemployment office. Sometimes the clients get frustrated, and some of them don't have no bus fare to be able to get up there. And also, this one is just, you know, job search. It's just about basically, you know, to be able to just turn around and say that they don't have these two pieces of paper for... To turn it in every 30 days, you know, that they're going to be terminated. To be able to turn around and say, "We're going to terminate you because you can't produce these two pieces of paper," and knowing that these people that, you know, the reason why they got on this program, because they're the ones who's having a hard time. And to be able to say, "You know, we're going to terminate you because you don't meet the qualification," or something like that, you know, that all I'm saying is that, you know, some of them are already struggling with the homeless and necessary and the difficulty, and to be able to say, you know, they're not asking for no handout. They just need a hand to be able to uplift them, to give them the help that they need to be able to turn around and say, "You know what? We're going to terminate you because you don't meet the qualification for these two pieces of paper." And all I'm asking that, you know, to be able to understand why they... I mean, so matters to the... To be able to have these two pieces of paper, and they really can use the help. And I'm asking the Evanston people to, you know, and the alums to be able to open their heart and then not terminate the people and find another solution for that. Thank you very much.
My name is Betty Esther, and also I come to you as a part of democracy that took place on March 25th here in this room. We had a special township election, and the township electors that came out that night, and they voted and they elected me as supervisor of the township. There is a book, and it's called The Township Handbook, that was put together by the township official. And in that, it has most of the regulations and things. The section that where the board was supposed to appoint a new supervisor when Gary Gaster left, clearly stated that the board, that was their duties, that was their responsibility. We hoped that they would do it. What they did was, they appointed Wally Bakewell as the acting supervisor. If you read that book and you read the law, the word "acting" is not in there. It does not say that the board has the right to appoint an interim or temporary supervisor. It says stated that you have to elect a supervisor for the full term to serve the rest of the term of that individual. Yes, we was in the midst of facing a referendum which had been duly passed and stuff, and was sent down to David Orr's office to go on the ballot. But even with that, that did not take away or discount or say that the board of trustees was not supposed to follow the law. It was their responsibility, as we look to all of our electoral officials, to do their due diligence to follow the law. They did not correct that. It said, "Oh, we sorry, we made a mistake with that referendum vote to appoint Wally as the acting." It should have been, he is appointed the township supervisor to serve out the rest of the term. That term by any vote will have ended the day after the election was certified. So, not making that correction within the 60 days time that is specified in the book, the electors had the right to appoint a new supervisor, which they did. At the next city council meeting, it was told that that was an unofficial election. The town clerk and the city clerk, he was sitting when he played it, he was the city clerk, played the audio, and it stated that there was only 12 people there, and then... But he didn't play it all. Because if he had have played it all, it would have said, "Well, I will give you three to five," then he said, "Three to four minutes." During that time, there was interaction going on, and then the town clerk said, "Oh, I'm sorry, we can go on with the meeting." When the town clerk made that statement, there was 15-plus electors in the room. So, the business that was conducted that night was official. Tonight, we have this meeting, the town meeting, and we're supposed to look at different documents. If you go to the township, you look at the law, it says you're supposed to have the financial statement 10 days. You're supposed to have these documents that you're supposed to review. I asked for them. I did not get them. They was not ready for a review. How can we, as electors, be asked to vote and have confidence in people that cannot give us the simple thing? I know it's difficult when you're pushed running two different jobs and you're trying to get things together and days get hard and flustered. That might be, but it's still your duties to have those documents available for us to see. We talk about what in all... During the time of the election, it was told and promised to us as residents that the township will... They will continue the work of the township. The city said it will continue the work of the township as it is. Tonight, you heard a young man that receiving general assistance, and as he stated, April 1st, he was told he got to go now every month to get a document signed by the unemployment office before the township. That was every six months. That is a change. It's a hardship change. Because in the regulation, it states that you classify your clients as being A, able to work, are restricted, have restriction on their... What they can do and what type of employment they can do. E, exempt from employment. That is in their client's file. To have a client that if they saying everybody got to do that, and a client is exempt from employment, to go down to the employment office to ask for a form to be signed, and he has not worked maybe in five or six years...
Ms. Esther, I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you. So, I say to you tonight, we will be... I promise those people and the people that was supporting, we will be watching what goes forth. And if you watch the Rules Committee in part of AP and W, they are talking about eliminating the position for the tax assessor, the one that Bonnie talked so highly and so very elegant on as not having that. They talked about sending that to Larry Sufferton.
Ms. Esther, please.
One more thing, and then I'm begun. Bonnie had stated that she talked to Larry Sufferton. He wouldn't... It was up to the city. In the meeting, they promised to pay him. So, what do you think?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Madeleine Decray. I'm of the Fifth Ward. I would like to thank Bonnie Wilson, first of all, and her department. I would also like to thank the General Assistance Office for helping the people of Evanston in the way that they did. I am on record as being a person that did not want the Evanston Township dissolved. I think many people know this. And I am still in favor, and we're still working to have the irregularities checked out by the Attorney General. I'm still in favor of that. Also tonight, I would like to say a few words concerning the transition of the Evanston Township to the City of Evanston. I am very concerned about certain programs that were promised to the people of Evanston if the township were dissolved. I'm hearing that some changes is on the table already. I've been listening to the Rules Committee. I heard a meeting tonight that suggested things could be changed, or maybe would be This is not right. Wally, the manager, made a promise to the people. I heard him say it many times at different meetings. I've heard him say it at Alderman Tendem meeting. I've also heard Peter Breakweet, if I'm pronouncing his name right, Dolores Holm, our Alderman, and other people that have said they have talked to certain people on this council in favor of a plan. I personally asked for a plan before this township was dissolved. And while he gave us a plan, I'm going to hold Wally to that plan unless the council sees fit to have him to do otherwise, and the people will remember those promises. We're asking Larry Sufferton office, I'd like to say a few things. I went to Larry Sufferton office many times. They helped, but not like the Bonnie Wilson and the Sharon office. They were personable. They reached out to the people. They reached out to senior citizens. We're going to miss that. And let me tell you something. This manager made a promise to us about the assessor office. I don't care right now. Money is leaving us. Mitzi Gibbs is there, no offense. But that was a promise that someone would be there, full-time, part-time, whatever, to help the people of Evanston. And we going to hold this council to it. And if you don't, we're not going to speak kindly about you, no offense, because the city manager, the city council, the people must trust you. They must trust you. And if they don't, the local government doesn't mean nothing to the people. You get paid. I don't even know offense, but you get paid. Of course, it's a little check. You probably could get more with another job, but you chose this. No one held, like I told the chief of police about the police. No one held a gun to your head and said, "You must take this job." You took it because you wanted to help the people, and you were elected. And we depend on you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitzi. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name on Foster. What's Gibbs? There you are.
Hi, I'm Mitzi Gibbs. I live on Foster Street.
I live on Foster Street, Evanston, obviously. I'm currently in the position as deputy assessor, working for assessor Bonnie Wilson. First thing, first of all, I wanted to say I had not planned on coming up here. This isn't my thing, or I should say, I haven't usually been to political meetings, and that's not what, usually what I do. I'm more of a reserved, quiet person. But after hearing a recommendation to have all of the assessors or the taxpayer advocate duties transferred to Larry Sufferton's office, it kind of, I'm a little bit upset about it. Because even though I've started working here February 3rd, thank you Bonnie Wilson, I started working here February 3rd, that's a little over two months, I have seen in the office the difference that it makes to be personable to people who are handicapped, if I'm saying it correctly, who are older, who can't get around too much, who need extra help in completing the forms, or having you mail out a form to them, or having you just have the patience to work with them, to be able to get them the exemptions that they deserve, that they're due, as well as help with the appeals, as well as correcting any errors that were made in the past. I want to acknowledge Bonnie Wilson Assessor. I don't cry, and I'm about to cry. Thank you very much, thank you very much. It's been an honor working for her. I've known her two and a half, or two months, little over, and it feels like I've known her a really long time. She's professional, she's hardworking, she's full of integrity, and she works hard for all of the people who have come in the office, 454 to date since January 2014. So, I thank her for the opportunity. I thank her for all of her guidance, for allowing me to learn, make a few mistakes, for providing me training right away to try and get me up to speed on doing the job as best I could possible. I do want to say that this is a needed service, whether it's for the elderly or older people or just younger people buying a home, getting homeowners exemptions, whether it's for inputting their permits, hundreds of permits that I still need to finish. It's a needed service. And I also want to address that the city said that this service would continue. This is what was campaigned on, that the services would continue under the city's management as opposed to the Township. So, I'd like to hold you all to that. Regardless of who's in this position, whether it's me or someone else, that's irregardless. It's a needed position, whoever it is who's going to fill this position, it's a needed position. And I want to thank my mother, Madeline DuCre, that I'm very proud of, for her passion, for her motivation, for her drive to come up here and hold elected officials accountable, to bring things that are going on in the community and speak about it. And thank you for introducing me to Bonnie Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, or trustee Rainey, sorry.
Madam Moderator, I would just like to clarify for the electors that it is not the Board of Trustees or the city council that has argued that we do not need the assessor's office, it is only me. I am the only person I've heard say this, so do not blame the rest of the council for my position on this matter. I do not believe it is a proper function of the municipal government to conduct real estate, tax, counseling, or whatever it is that the Township assessor did. So, it is only me, it is not them, we've never taken a vote on it, I've heard not one other member of the council support me on this. So, you can beat me up, but don't beat my colleagues up because it's not their thing. But I think it is truly, and I have said this from the beginning, when we began talking about transferring the duties of, or the tasks of the Township to the city, I believe totally that we should transfer all of the, all of the responsibilities to the clients of the Township. I believe we should do the general assistance, housing, and personal, and medical, but I do, and jobs, but I do not believe that the assessor's office should, the job of the assessor's office should be transferred to the city. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and when it comes up for a vote, I will vote against it, so. But don't blame them.
Thank you for the explanation. That concludes citizen comment, unless there is someone else. All right, citizen comment is closed. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to raise tonight? All right, there's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, the town meeting is adjourned. City clerk, would you call the roll for the city council meeting?
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover, oops. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. One, two, three, four, five, six, six, zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 8th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is mayor's proclamations and public announcements. It is National Library Week, April 13th through 19th, and it is Breathe Deep North Shore Day, April 27th, 2014. I want to read just one whereas from Breathe Deep North Shore Day. Whereas, "Breathe Deep North Shore will honor the memories of longevity founders Melissa Zagan and Gail Levy, as well as Elise Bernstein Keith and others in the community who lost their lives to lung cancer." And that is in memory of Alderman, now Judge Bernstein's niece, Elise. So, that will be April 27th, 2014. The only announcement that I have is I would like to talk about Gail Lovinger and adopting my dog. I have not weighed in on the discussion of the animal shelter, but I'm going to do so now. I took my grandchildren with me to be interviewed by Gail, our adoption counselor, and she was very thorough, and I have a terrific dog. Thank you, Gail, and thank you, CARE. Several weeks after Gail had interviewed us and worked with us on how to be better owners of a dog, my granddaughter said, "You're doing it wrong, Grandma." And I said, "What am I doing wrong?" And she said, "I was holding the leash wrong." She said, "Remember the lady." I said, "What lady?" She said, "The lady at the, at CARE, who not only showed me everything to do to take care of the dog, but even how to hold on to the leash," which, I'm sorry, Gail, I had forgotten, but my grandchildren were very impressed with everything you said. So, I thank CARE for everything they've done over the years, and I think Evanston is at its best when we all are involved in civic issues, and I think we're at our worst when we're all involved in civic issues and are all maligning one another. So, I would like to take this opportunity to thank CARE for all their years of service and to say that I think we can disagree. I know I disagree with CARE and have said so over foster care and their volunteers, if they don't want to run a foster care operation, or if they do want to, that's their decision. But I think that we can argue about how to care better for dogs without demeaning one another. And I apologize to CARE for all of the arguments that you've had to sit through, and I appreciate the work that you've done over the years. And that's all that I have to say about that. City manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the week of April 13th through 19th is National Library Week. Karen Danzig-Lions, the library directors here, with a brief presentation of their 2013 report and other highlights of what's going on at the Evanston Public Library.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, members of the city council, city manager Bob Kowits. I will keep this brief. I have copies of our annual report to share with you, but I just wanted to point out some of the highlights of our activities and the hard work of the staff in 2013. In many of our metrics last year, we saw increases. I'm particularly proud that 664,644 people walked through the doors of the three Evanston Public Library locations. As you can see from the slide, there were many more visits, both electronically, and we had almost 91,000 onsite computer sessions, free computer sessions, internet sessions for our public. We also intentionally turned outward last year. We have many fine programs and book discussions within our libraries, but to bring services throughout the community, recognizing that locations and busy schedules can create barriers to service, we had 437 programs that we produced throughout the city and had a very nice response, 13,887 people. We also topped a million in circulation last year, and our cardholder group for both businesses and residents is continuing to grow very strongly and continues to grow. We serve you at all, at all of your ages, and so certainly a lot of what we do is to support children and help them be ready to learn when they enter school, and support teens as they continue to explore the world around them. And we had an 18% increase in attendance at our children's programs. I wanted to mention that we have 20 storytimes each week that are very popular. There are times when we have a traffic jam with all of the carts and the strollers as people try and get in, and I know Alderman Fisk has noticed that at the main library, but that also happens at both camps and at North. And our young librarian, our young adult librarian, is out in the schools, visiting and making the connection with the teens and one-on-one, so that teens feel that they have a friendly face and they're welcome, and it eases their transition from the school into the library. We also are trying to help educators and had a best pictures book, picture books of 2013 program that we put together with educators to teach them about the best literature that was produced that will help the youngest readers learn and enjoy themselves. We are a cultural center as well, and so we've, on a monthly basis at the main library, have local artists that are represented, but we also have authors that join us, and we have book discussions. We were fortunate enough, one of our staff was successful in getting a Muslim's Journey, Muslim Journeys grant, a national grant, and so we brought a series of programs to our community and had a great response to that. We have 84 book discussions last year in a variety of topics and also in many different You'll hear more about this in a few moments, our partnership with the Economic Development Department, but we have program services and staff ready to assist our youngest business owners, small businesses and entrepreneurs, to have a competitive edge, and we have free classes for everyone. We had 228 classes on word processing, spreadsheets, resume writing. We have a WorkNet Job Center in the main library that helps people every day to improve their skills and be competitive in the job market. And this week is Money Smart Week, so if you check our calendar, we have a variety of programs to help you with your personal and business finances. Recognizing that we have a diverse community and that we want to welcome everyone to the library, we have a Latino outreach coordinator who is reaching out to our Spanish-speaking immigrants, and we have many programs in Spanish and continue to expand that. But we also thoughtfully partnered with a variety of agencies last year to have citizenship classes, to have English as a second language. Every Tuesday and Friday, we have hundreds of people in the main library learning English. And I was very happy that, working with the government, we had the first naturalization ceremony and welcomed 43 new immigrants. The mayor was our keynote speaker, and three of the new residents, new immigrants were Evanston residents, and so we're delighted that they're with us. We, just last April, we launched a mobile app, and so we are a click away on your smartphone. And in that year, we've had 3,412 users sign up and over, almost 259,000 queries that were answered or entered into that mobile app. So, that's an area of growth for us. 24 hours a day, you can get to us on your computer, but we're a free app, and so you can get to us on your phone as well. We have 4,000 followers for our Facebook page, and 20,000 people receive our e-newsletter every two weeks. So, we're really looking at social media to better communicate, better connect, and better inform our residents about all the programs that are there for them. Recognizing that some transportation issues are difficult to overcome, and knowing that we have senior residential facilities throughout the city where the seniors are not as connected as we would hope, our community outreach librarian brought computer classes and partnered with the youth technology corps at the high school to bring teens to help teach these classes. And so, at PRIM and at Blake, and now at Grove, we are bringing regular computer classes to seniors, showing them how to sign up for email, how to use computers. And we also worked with them at PRIM and Blake to develop their own personal story, to use it as an opportunity to work on the computer, on the word processor, and create their own personal stories. And we were just delivering those stories to them today, and that was popular. We also bring books that are donated or reeded from our collection throughout the community. We deliver them now along with meals because we think books can be a good companion as you're eating. And we also bring free books and leave them throughout the city. On average, about 500 books a month are delivered to the metro stations, to the civic center throughout the city, making it more convenient to collect, connect, and connect with books. So, building on our success, this year, we offered for the first time free tax assistance, and at the halfway mark of the tax season, 152 residents had had their taxes prepared, and we returned more than $330,000 in tax returns through this program to the community with the support of Economic Development Committee and the city's Department of Economic Development. We've developed next chapter, which is for our small businesses, our entrepreneurs, and we have a series of classes and also one-on-one consultation to help you develop your business plan and do market research. We also are working much more closely with Parks and Recreation. And while in the past we brought the summer reading program to various park sites, now it's going to be embedded at three pilot parks as part of their curriculum. And so, we're looking forward to finding new ways to serve our residents and bring summer reading to the students to maintain their reading scores. I have copies that I'll leave in the back, and I thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about what we're doing and what we hope to do. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Karen, I'm so proud of you and your team and the library. We've come such a long way in the short time that you've been here. It's just fabulous, and the outreach to the larger city is wonderful, and I'm such a fan, so thank you. I don't know how you can do all of it, but keep it up.
Thank you. We have a great team, it's a wonderful staff.
Thank you very much.
That concludes city manager reports.
Thank you. City clerk, do you have communications for us?
Madam Mayor, I just have one. Just want to, just want to make an announcement that Mike McCarthy, who was a dear neighbor of mine, passed this week, and his funeral service will be Levy Center this Thursday. So, those who knew Mike, who worked with the Special Olympics and the Parks and Recreation, just a great guy, I just want to say that we're missing, he was a great asset to our community as well. He passed on last week, and his service will be this Thursday at the Levy Center from 5:00 to 9:00. That's all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public hearing, TAFRA hearing on the proposed issuance by the City of Revenue Bonds Series 2014. Ms. Mason Cupp, would you like to walk us? Ms. Mason Cupp, would you like to walk us through this?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the councils, Manager Bob Kowits, Clerk Green, Michelle Mason Cupp from Law Department, Mayor Chiswell, we need a motion to recess the City Council meeting and reconvene a bond hearing for its item A8 on your council packet.
I'm sure someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor, that we convene as a public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to reconvene as a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you. This hearing is called pursuant to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code and held for purposes of conducting a hearing on the issuance of Revenue Bonds Series 2014A and 2014B. The hearing is held to solicit any public comments relative to the issue, and prior to calling for public comments, I will read certain findings into the record. Notice of hearing was previously given to Clerk Green previously today. It was published in The Sun-Times on March 18th and in The Evanston Review on March 20th. Both publications are of general circulation in the city. The proposed bond issuance before you this evening is for City of Evanston Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2014A and Series 2014B. It is in the maximum aggregate face amount of $7,480,000. Caravalli Montessori Schools, a non-for-profit corporation under the laws of the state of Illinois, and represented to the city that the proceeds of the bonds will be issued together with other available funds to refund the city for Revenue Bonds Series issued in 2010, the proceeds of which were used to finance the acquisition of the land and the existing school and is operated by the borrower, as well as renovations and improvements to the school facility. It will also support finance or refinance or reimbursement itself for the cost of further renovation, exterior and interior expansion, improvement and equipping of the school facility. And it will also fund certain working capital and pay certain costs incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds. The bonds do not and shall never constitute an indebtedness or obligation of the city, the state, or any political subdivision thereof within the purview of any constitutional limitation or statutory provision or charge against the credit or general taxing powers, if any, of the state, the city, or any other political subdivision. The bonds are special limited obligations of the city payable solely out of the revenues and income of the city derived pursuant to the loan agreement by and among the city, the school, and MB Financial Bank as the initial lender and purchaser of the bonds. No owner of the bonds shall have the right to compel any exercise of the taxing power of the city, the state, or any political subdivision. At this time, as your hearing officer, I welcome any members of the public who would indemnify themselves and deliver any comments relative to the issuance of this bond. I also invite members of the City Council to comment on pursuant to this issuance. Hearing none, I adjourn this hearing.
Next on the agenda is citizen comment.
Madam Mayor, do we have to reconvene?
We do. Alderman Rainey, would you like to reconvene us?
I was going to move to adjourn.
All right.
I moved to reconvene the council.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have reconvened, and the next item on the agenda is citizen comment. There are 30 people signed up to speak and only 45 minutes to share, so you each get more than a minute, but not much more, so please, if a speaker who's spoken before you said something you agree with, please say you agree with the previous speaker. That will be as effective as repeating it. I'm going to call the first four speakers. Please give your name and address.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. I have a question, and it's, I know this is up for introduction, and my question is if the city manager could explain ordinance 52-0-14 a little more clear, where it talks about the creation and composition of the General Assistance Fund. You first should talk about creating an account, and then you say, this fund, especially this thing, this fund shall receive tax revenue in accordance with the annual tax levy, ordinance and ordinance resolution, so forth. Is that the reg, annual levy that the city set or not? So if you don't mind explaining that, you could put it on the website, and I could read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Strauss. I live at 1616 Hindman in Evanston. I'm a 20-year Evanston resident and a 14-year volunteer with CARE at the Evanston Animal Shelter. The issue I want to address is the money. The city needs to move and move fast to obtain an injunction against the $1 million-plus that was raised for the Evanston Animal Shelter but is sitting in CARE's bank account. The time to move is now, before CARE takes that money and invests it elsewhere. The time for an injunction is when the money is sitting in a bank account. There's no question that the city has standing to sue. This was a partnership. CARE provided some money and volunteer hours, and the city provided other monies and the building. In a memo to all the volunteers in August 2012, CARE acknowledged that this was, in fact, a partnership. As part of this partnership, CARE's role was as the exclusive fundraising arm of the shelter. The city, for its part, allowed CARE to use the name of the shelter to raise money for the Evanston Shelter.
Ms. Strauss, I need you to wrap up.
And use that name, they did. In the Strut for Strays, the first giving page states that CARE is a, quote, "unique shelter." The donation cans that they used were for the Evanston Animal Shelter, and when they had a party at Whole Foods in October 2013.
Ms. Strauss, I really need you to...
Again, for the Evanston Animal Shelter.
Thank you.
I urge the council to act quickly.
Thank you. Madeline, yes? Yes?
I'm sorry. I'm going to let it go. It's late.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pauline Yearwood? Okay. And then Gail Lovinger and John and Aaron Crucial.
Hello. This is about CARE, naturally, and I'm going to be reading a statement from Marsha Niasman, who could not be here. She's a 20-year Evanston resident, a 20-year, she lives in Alderman, I can't remember which ward, but she is a 20-year cat volunteer with CARE, and here is her statement. Recently included in a packet to the city manager was a form detailing the standard protocol CARE adheres to and its care of our cats. It was clear from the proposal which the manager's office sent to CARE that the piece made no impact upon the author of the proposal. This is just a heads up to the council and the city manager that the majority of the animals at our shelter are cats. We are now at the time of year when our inventory, which is currently 18 cats, is at its lowest, but soon our spring kitten season will be beginning, and we will begin to receive many more adult cats as well. Typically in July, every cage is filled in the cat section of the shelter. Last year, from June to December 31st, 54 kittens entered the shelter. Many of these were orphans under the age of two weeks who required bottle feeding every few hours and were generally very high maintenance. Last fall, the chief animal warden complained of the amount of food the kittens were eating and suggested that our foster parents purchase their own food. In 2012, the cat volunteers were informed that well before the end of the fiscal year, the city was insisting that the cat volunteers ration the amount of litter each cat was given. The city could not...
I'm sorry, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, just one. The city could not cover the cats' basic needs, yet the city manager seems to feel that it will not be difficult to find a rescue group able to pay for these basic needs as well as to provide some extensive medical care. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Lovinger. I live in the 7th Ward. I've been living in this, in Evanston for more than 25 years. I've been a volunteer with CARE as a dog adoption counselor for more than 20 years. I currently serve on the board, and my remarks today are on behalf of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Chiswell for her remarks. Placing safe, appropriate animals in homes where everybody is happy is a passion of mine, and knowing that Comet has a wonderful forever home is very rewarding for me. I would like to also thank the City Council for allowing me this opportunity to make these remarks. I spoke last night at the Human Services Committee. I emailed a draft of my comments to you. I do not intend to repeat them at this time. What I do want to say is for 27 years, the Community Animal Rescue Effort has cared for the animals at the Evanston Animal Shelter and served the community. Along the way, we've learned a lot. We've contributed a lot, and somewhere along the way, we changed an animal control facility into an animal shelter. The relationship between CARE and the police department has not always been smooth. There's been a lot of bumps in the road, but we've managed to get through them because there was a shared vision and philosophy for what a shelter should be. It is now apparent that there is not a shared vision and philosophy for what an animal shelter should be. If tonight the city decides that CARE's vision of a shelter is not something the city cares to embrace, we understand that the city will want to go in a different direction and work with a different volunteer group. That is your prerogative, and that is certainly your right. We are just, we would be disappointed to have the shelter turned into a different kind of organization. If this does happen, we wish you luck.
I'm sorry.
We wish you luck, and we are, we'll be looking forward to working to ensure a sound transition plan that will serve both the animals and the community.
John and Aaron Crucial?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's John Crucial. I live at 716 Bormal. I'll be as brief as I can. Alls I'm hearing from the CARE representatives is expenses and costs. They've got $1.3 million. What are they spending it on? They could have bought food for the kittens they just talked about. There doesn't seem to be any oversight from the city over CARE. I think it's a great, the volunteers are very, very dedicated people. I think there's an issue with management. $1.3 million, I don't know how it was raised, probably under, from what this controversy where it was raised. I would just like to ask the City Council to make sure that any donor-directed funds are investigated and counted for, and they go for what the donors gave the money for, which is for the Evanston Shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Junad Riske, Jeffrey Mallow, and Ann Mallow. Okay. Thank you.
Just so people understand, the item I'm talking about is a 20% water bill increase if it passed. Well, this, tonight will pass to do the study, but if they take the reservoir and rebuild it, a new reservoir, we have 20% water bill increase. What I am going to suggest, since this council plans to pass this tonight, that two other options be added to the study, which would cost nothing, and that is to run the numbers for 30 years and 50 years with the top replacement. That costs nothing. The consultants will run the numbers, and that should be done. And frankly, I don't know why we're selecting the one consultant over the other because it didn't meet the minority standards. It's the same consultant, so we should really consider the other consultant so we get some better idea of what's going on. This will continue, and frankly, there's one issue I did notice in there that Mr. Stonebeck wants studied, and that's the house next to the water plant that's going to be used as part of the site. Are the Aldermen aware of that? That's what I saw in the request for proposal. It wasn't said in the memo. So is the city planning to buy that property, or what's going on with that? Maybe someone will address that tonight. And frankly, we'll see, I think we're basically, everybody should understand, even after the study is done, this could be a 20% to 30, be a 20% increase in water bills for this thing. This is what people need to continue to understand, rather than a 2% or 3% increase if we replace the top. So, I mean, are people going to be able to afford this? That's another interesting question.
Asher Beerman, Peggy Schaefer, and Emma Carl Smith. All right.
Good evening.
Somebody's keeping track of how much time Alisa's counting.
Five minutes.
You're in charge of keeping that number for me. Thank you.
Good evening. I speak tonight on behalf of my family, which in the last 18 years has adopted three wonderful dogs through CARE. These dogs have enriched our lives, and for that, I thank CARE and the advisors at CARE. Most cities would be eternally grateful to have a group of 200 passionate volunteers caring for the abandoned dogs and cats in our community. However, I've listened or enviewed and attended the Human Relations Committee and subcommittee meetings, and the words I don't hear are the word "thank you." All I hear is criticism, and until tonight, Mayor, you were the only one to actually thanked CARE. I've heard no thank yous. Last night, I attended the meeting at Human Relations, and they have recommended to the council not to negotiate further with CARE, even though CARE has indicated a willingness to negotiate further policy. And I frankly don't understand. You have a manufactured dispute between the city and a long-term volunteer charity, volunteer partner. You refuse to negotiate a resolution. CARE's been working with the city for 27 years. They deserve better. The citizens of Evanston deserve better, and frankly, the animals deserve better than what you are recommending, what the Human Relations Committee is recommending. For the sake of the animals, do what's right. Please do not sever your relationship with CARE. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Emma Smith. I live at 1607 Dobson Street in Evanston. I'm an Evanston resident, and I support the Human Services Committee's recommendation to find a new volunteer organization to work with the City of Evanston at the Evanston Animal Shelter. It is clear that the relationship between the City of Evanston and CARE has been broken for some time. This message was written and signed by the CARE Board and is dated August 2012. It is clear that the Evanston Police Department and CARE have different duties, goals, and visions for the future of the shelter and CARE. It's time for us to move forward. Alderman Holmes, yesterday, said that Evanston should and can have the best of everything. Please help Evanston move on from CARE and have the best shelter.
Jean Ferrone and Cheryl Ferraro and Rob Mark. Okay.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Ferraro. I live at 1124 Brummel. I've been a resident since 1983. And I'm going to keep my time for myself. One thing that I wasn't going to mention, but I would like to mention now, is that on several holidays this year, I'm a one-year volunteer and a supporter, I have gone in on holidays and walked dogs with the board members. Everybody takes off, and the dogs need care.
Speaking to the members.
Okay, and the dogs need to be cared for. And on several days, I was there, as well as board members. Okay, so, my remarks are in regard to the meetings that we have just held through the Human Services Committee. I am very disappointed in the way in which these meetings have been conducted. This was not at all what I expected. There was no meaningful discussion between the Human Services Committee and CARE. I'm sorry, did you catch that? There was no meaningful discussion between the Human Services Committee and CARE. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gerster Carlson, and Alyssa Kaplan, and Barbara Janes.
Good evening. My name is Kirsten Carlson. I am a Chicago resident, a former CARE volunteer, and a certified dog trainer. I wanted to stand before you tonight not to stand against any organization or anyone. I stand before you to support something. I wanted to support the proposals put forth by the Human Services Committee. It's been a long road for a lot of us, and we've heard a lot of negativity, but I'm really hoping that we can move forward in a positive light and try to work together as a community with the city, whatever rescue organization the city chooses to work with, in a spirit of partnership. And I'm really hoping that we can move forward from what we've learned through a very long and arduous process. I don't think that there hasn't been much that hasn't been covered already through all these committee meetings. So I'm really hoping that the city council can now move forward in a spirit of partnership and will accept the proposals put forth by the Human Services Committee. They've done a very good, thorough, and fair job, and I want to thank them for all their hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Alyssa, how much time do you have?
I think I have like five minutes.
Six minutes.
I don't even think it'll take that long.
Go for it.
My name is Alyssa Kaplan. I live in the 1st Ward. I represent a group of volunteers who have raised concerns about CARE's policies and practices. This process has unfolded over more than two years. It started with individual volunteers speaking to individual CARE board members about our concerns, about CARE's behavior evaluation process and its euthanasia rate, and it progressed to our submitting formal questions to the board. When the board told us to stop asking questions, we decided further discussions with them were fruitless, and we brought our concerns to the city. Before the city got involved, CARE had one of the highest euthanasia rates of unclaimed dogs in the area. It was twice that of large shelters like Anti-Crulty and 10 times that of smaller shelters like Waukegans. Once the city became involved and we were able to work with Chief Warden Tekler to place the failed dogs with outside rescue groups, the euthanasia rate plummeted. Last year, Evanston euthanized just five dogs, down from more than 40 in 2011. To achieve this, a group of volunteers spent hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars of our own money to care for and find homes for Evanston dogs when CARE would not. The CARE leadership did not support these efforts. Indeed, it imposed them, opposed them from the beginning, and cited them as one of the reasons they wanted to separate from the city in 2012. I'd like to emphasize here that we have never argued that every dog is adoptable or that every dog can be saved. We all understand that there are truly dangerous dogs that should not be placed in homes. The warden has made that difficult determination several times this year. We just don't believe that our dogs are so much more dangerous than dogs in these other communities. And in fact, we have about 20 dogs now who prove that they are not more dangerous. These are dogs who CARE slated for euthanasia but are now thriving in foster or adoptive homes. At the first Human Services Committee meeting on this issue, person after person came forward to say that they loved these dogs and that they had been successful additions to their families. This wasn't surprising because we had two independent reports, one from the ASPCA and one from CARE's own evaluator, who said that there were significant problems with the process that CARE used to decide which dogs to euthanize. Yet CARE never acknowledged that there were problems with their process or offered to make meaningful changes to it. Even after these reports and questioning by city officials, they continue to use the same process to recommend euthanasia for dogs who, after being rescued by the city, are now doing well in homes. We appreciate the decision to develop a new partnership agreement for the shelter, and we support its goals. We also have full confidence in the city's ability to move the shelter forward. From the beginning, we have been impressed with the city's responsiveness and professionalism on this issue. From Chief Warden Tekler and Chief Eddington, who immediately stepped in to rescue dogs CARE had slated for euthanasia, to Mayor Tisdall, city council members, and city staff, who listened to hours of testimony and read countless letters, everyone has shown a deep concern for the animals and a deep respect for the volunteers who do the essential day-to-day work at the shelter. In short, we are excited about this new agreement and what it would mean for the future of the shelter. We know the community can count on the city's commitment to make Evanston's shelter the best it can be and to fulfill its potential to serve both Evanston's residents and its animals. We know that dedicated volunteers will remain at the shelter, and others that have become disillusioned or discouraged in the past will return. We are looking forward to seeing these positive changes for the shelter and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Janes. I live at 802 Colfax Street. I am here -- actually, there is a dog connection here, but that's not the main point. I am here tonight to urge you not to spend $86,000 on an unnecessary study on the water reservoir. We do not need any more studies. We have three studies that all say the same thing. All that has to happen is that the top needs to be fixed. The agreement that placed the water reservoir on the Northwestern property, in return, we gave Northwestern a beach and a street, and that agreement is in perpetuity. But if you do decide to go ahead with this, one of the options in this proposed study lists removing the reservoir to Leahy Park. How could anyone even conceive that this would be a reasonable idea? Leahy Park is one of the most heavily-used parks in the city, and a city that is already underparked. The rec department runs filled-to-capacity summer camps at Leahy. It is used by all kinds of soccer teams. The tennis courts are in constant demand, and the playground is in constant use. Since this is spring break, and a third of your aldermen are on spring break.
I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. Leahy is not an option, and the link to the dogs is use some of that money to put a decent fence at the dog beach. But please, don't do that.
Thank you. Next is Yvette Jordan Granberry, Kathy Robertson, Virginia Man.
I'm Yvette Jordan Granberry. I live at 809 Brummel Street, have been a 31-year resident of Evanston, and a five-year dog volunteer at CARE, as well as part of their tabling team that does outside work in the community, primarily pet stores, community events, et cetera. I'm late to the game in regards to this dispute with CARE and the city, and have really only stepped forward in the last several months because, in part, the stories that we would hear from CARE leadership about how they would come to a meeting and were told that the meeting was going to be about X, and it got changed to something else. Quite frankly, a lot of the volunteers couldn't believe it, so we started to want to be a part of it and see for ourselves. And unfortunately, I have been dismayed in regards to how this whole situation has unfolded over the last several months. I do realize that everyone in the room feels extremely passionately about the animals, but we have never really been in a situation for negotiation. And even the document that was presented to us over the last two weeks in regards to the animal control policy, it is not fair to any volunteer animal organization. It is lopsided, if you will, and I will put those comments in writing to the full council shortly. So regardless of what happens with CARE as a whole, there are still items that I feel need to be under consideration, that the policy as it stands that was voted on last night by the Human Services Commission is still not a fully partnership policy in regards to whatever volunteer animal organization you have working with you. Lastly, in regards to CARE and furthering our relationship with the city, the volunteers and the CARE leadership would like to have the opportunity for a negotiation of an agreement and would like to participate in that RFP. But if the city no longer wants, feels that CARE, we've heard several statements that the ability to work with CARE is impossible, or ability to work with the CARE and the city. So maybe we all need to get different players at the table and remove some of the emotion that's going on that seems to have dragged this situation along, and allow cooler heads to prevail, and allow us to hopefully all get to where we'd like to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kathy Roberts. I don't have much to say, just having listened to that, though. I have to say that I think CARE has had several opportunities to try to negotiate with the city, try to respond to the requirements that were put forth, and we're waiting for the 11th hour, and now this is coming, and I think it's too much, too little, too late, and I'm ready to just move on, and I think we should. I think Evanston deserves that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Man, 3004 Normandy Place. First, I'd like to discuss item A 3.3, approval of a contract with Sunrise Tree Service for Dutch Elm Tree Injection Program. First of all, I'd like to commend the city council for continuing this program. It has been incredibly successful by Paul DiAgostino's own numbers. It's more than 99% effective. If it were not for this program these past 10 years in its various forms, either by the residents or by the city, we today would have a very different-looking city than what we do. It would also have damaged our property values. We have a great tree canopy in much of Evanston, thanks in part to our majestic elm trees, and I hope that you will continue to fund this program. I would also ask the city manager to direct Mr. DiAgostino to make certain that there are parts in this contract that add protections to the city. Last year, there were several trees that failed that should not have, and there are provisions that can be put in, such as a guarantee. The manufacturer guarantees the effectiveness of this treatment, so whoever is injecting it should be able to extend that same guarantee to the city, and taxpayers should not be paying for failed injections. So I hope that that and other protections that Mr. DiAgostino and I discussed last year will be put into the contract. Now for CARE. I've taken the opportunity to speak every time I've had a chance on this topic because I'm not a volunteer, I'm not on either side of the family here. It's not an emotional thing for me, it's just about the animals for me. I don't have a relationship with people on either side, and I want people, I hope the council will put aside all this discussion of he said, she said, and look at the facts. The fact is that CARE had a euthanasia rate of 40% to 50%, totally out of line with accepted practices. The reported extended stay of both cats and dogs is far beyond what you would find at most up-to-date and successful shelters in this area. We repeatedly hear about volunteers having to use their own funds to provide for resources, medical care, food. Now we're hearing even about kitty litter for kittens, either the volunteers or the city is paying for it, while CARE has raised $1.3 million that's sitting in the bank. Despite the fact that there's an emergency clinic just minutes away, we heard about a cat that was brought in on a Friday, and the volunteers had to provide comfort care for it because it was burnt and had frost-bitten ears, instead of taking it to the animal emergency clinic, which is just maybe a mile away. Instead, the animal suffered until Monday morning. These are not ways to provide care.
Virginia, I think your time's running out.
Yeah, okay, I'm wrapping up. These are not ways to provide treatment for animals in a world-class city like Evanston. It's not reflective of our values, and I hope that you will move to terminate this relationship, not because of the people, the volunteers are fabulous, but because it's not reflective of what shelters can and should be today, and it's not reflective of our values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last three speakers are Junaid Rizki, Madeline Ducray, and Carl Bova.
If it's okay, Mayor, I would like to give my minute or two to Mr. Rizki.
Not two, but you can give your minute.
Good, thank you. All right. I'm going to talk about wholesale water sales because there's not going to be a lot of time to discuss this. I had more of a presentation. The issue, as I'm going to say it again, people in this room need to understand, water bills can go up 100% here rather quickly with all this stuff going on here. And really, the issue I have, some people think I'm beating up on the city manager and others here, but they have not provided information that makes any sense. After two years, we have no contracts, nothing new. Why? What's going on? I mean, he's made a list of problems. I've run some of the numbers with this stuff, and it does not add up, okay? These guys have not given good numbers out, and there's a problem. And it's the same with the whole operation that's current here. And I've said this many times, why aren't we spending money for a study to say what's going on with the operation? There's a refusal to do this. And Skokie's contract is coming up for renewal in a couple of years, but we still don't know what the operation does. And people in this community do not want 100% water bill increase, and the reservoir is a 20% increase that's unnecessary to this whole thing. So, I mean, people cannot afford this. I'm not speaking for myself, but there are many people that are struggling in this community. Why should they pay for waste and mismanagement, really? And that's the issue here. And I'm not picking on anybody. The city manager owes us a detailed explanation of this operation, period. That's his job. And your job is to get that detailed explanation of the business operation of this thing to the public. That really is the answer, that's the issue here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carl Bova, 1322 Rosely Street. One alderman recently told me that she expects and depends upon sound professional judgment from staff to help perform her vote. At the last PND meeting, I brought several staff errors and misleading statements related to their memo recommending the project at Main and Chicago to the committee's attention. What this body does not know is that I provided some similar testimony at the earlier Plan Commission meeting. Nothing was done between the Plan Commission and PND meeting to correct the errors and the concerns that I brought up. Staff did nothing. Same poor memo. It was clear that most of the findings in the memo were based upon the applicant's own information, and virtually no own information and virtually no independent, unbiased evaluation by staff. Where do our citizens stand? Where is the professionalism? Please correct this problem and restore more professionalism into the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, Mike. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of March 24. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval of the payroll through March 23, $2,670,255.30. The bills through April 9, $3,381,156.82. Credit card bills through February 28, $120,686.35. We ask the committee, the council authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with the reservoir and Clearwell Planning Study with CDM Smith in the not-to-exceed amount of $86,359. Approval of a tree purchase from Suburban Tree Consortium for spring planting in the amount of $77,536.76 is requested. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a contract in the amount of $761,745 with Sunrise Tree Service Company for the 2014 Dutch Elm Disease Control Program. This is, okay, that's it. Next, approval is requested authorized to authorize the manager to execute an agreement for a one-year contract extension for the purchase of Ford Original Equipment Manufacturer parts in the amount of $88,500 with Gulf Mill Ford, Inc. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute the agreement for a one-year contract extension for the purchase of 500 tons of modified hot-mix asphalt at a cost of $52,000 per ton, $52 dollars per ton, and 300 tons of modified hot-mix binder at the cost of $44 dollars per ton with Arrow Road Construction doing business as Healy Asphalt for fiscal year 2014 for a cost of $39,200. We ask your approval for a single-source purchase for streetscape furniture items for Davis Street from Landscape Forms in the amount of $51,006. Approval is also requested for Resolution 14R14, authorizing the manager to execute a residential lease with Ann Carlson and Cody Modir for an apartment located at 631 Howard Street, Unit 2. Also, Resolution 22R14 to authorize the manager to execute a residential lease with Marcus Yaknis and Nicole M. Mickles for an apartment located at 631 Howard Street, Unit 1. Your approval is requested to authorize the manager to execute a license agreement with Caravelli Montessori School for use of a portion of Curry Park to locate temporary mobile classrooms for a 10-month period. We also request approval for Resolution 20R14 to authorize the manager to execute an easement agreement with Caravelli to provide for easements for the benefit of Caravelli on and under the city's park property, commonly known as Curry Park. Approval is also requested, and this is for introduction, Ordinance 51014, for the city to act as conduit financing authority for their debt issuance as part of the expansion of Caravelli's renovation, originally started with the city's initial conduit debt issuance in April of 2010. The city will not incur a liability to repay this debt in the event of a default by Caravelli. Your approval is also requested for introduction to amend Section 10115 Schedule V of the City Code to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of Broadway Avenue and Jenks Street. I believe, Madam Mayor, A10 is off the consent agenda, is that correct? I'm not sure why, but we've been told it's off the consent agenda. Next, Ordinance 43014, we request your approval for introduction, which decreases the number of authorized Class C liquor licenses from 23 to 22 due to issuance of an upgraded liquor license C1 to La Machina Cafe, doing business as La Machina Cafe at 1620 Orington. Request for introduction also for Ordinance 44014, which increases the number of Class C1 licenses from five to six to permit that same cafe at 1620 Orington Avenue to have this license. Your approval is also requested to introduce Ordinance 45014, amending the City Code to decrease the number of authorized Class I liquor licenses from one to zero due to issuance of an upgraded Class D license to Ward Eight LLC, doing business as Ward Eight, 629 Howard Street. Your approval is also requested to introduce Ordinance 46014, amending the City Code to increase the number of authorized Class D licenses from 49 to 50 to permit the issuance to Ward Eight LLC, doing business as Ward Eight, 629 Howard Street. A15 is also off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. We ask your approval for introduction for Ordinance 40014, recognizing the cessation of Evanston Township and codifying the city's assumption of the duties and obligation of Evanston Township. Also requesting introduction for creating the City of Evanston General Assistance Fund and defining other city duties and obligations. The Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and we request your approval to designate the portion of Emerson Street between Asbury and Green Bay Road with the honorary street name sign Hecq Powell Way. Resolution 19R14 is to name the portion of Dodge Avenue between Main Street and Lee Street with the honorary street name of Crown Family Way. Ordinance 48014, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move introduction and also suspension of the rules. The committee agreed to do this. The Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 48014, granting a special use permit for a Type II restaurant, Starbucks, and a drive-through facility at 1901 Dempster Street, the long-vacant Kentucky Fried Chicken building. I move introduction, and Madam Mayor and council, I also move suspension of the rules. The committee chair will address the approval of that. Next is P4. Madam Mayor, I remove this from the consent agenda. It will be addressed by the committee chair. P5 is removed from the consent agenda, will be addressed by the committee chair. The township payroll and bills for March 14 is requested approval by the township supervisor in the amount of $161,396.49. H2 Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Under Economic Development, Madam Mayor and council, we ask your approval of Resolution 15R14, which authorizes the manager to execute a TIF forgivable loan agreement and promissory note with Autobahn Motors. This agreement provides funding in an amount not to exceed $2.5 million from the Howard-Hartree Tax Increment Financing District to Autobahn for rehabilitation of the property located at 222 Hartree Avenue. O2 is Resolution 12R14, which has to do with the sales tax sharing agreement for Autobahn, and that is removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Madam Mayor has not recommended any assignments to boards or commissions, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Six to zero.
Six to nothing, the consent agenda is passed. Alderman Holmes, could you lead us through Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please, I'm going to be steeled, if you don't mind.
Oh, right ahead.
On A10, Ordinance 42-0-14, amending the Class P1 liquor license, that was made, I would move introduction of that, but it was asked to be removed from the agenda for tonight. And P15 as well. Somebody wants to speak to that.
Alderman Rainey, did you want to speak to that?
A10, I thought that was simply being moved and not for introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we'd like to remove it.
It's being held, I'm sorry.
Perfect. As the liquor commissioner, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that's what I thought was coming from the liquor commissioner. And the same thing on P15, Ordinance 49014, increasing the number of...
You mean A15?
I'm sorry, A15. It's after 10, I don't function very well after that. Ordinance 49-014, increasing the number of Class P1 liquor licenses for the Common Culture Beer Company, doing business as a sketch brewing company at 825 Chicago Avenue, Suite E2. And that was also being held.
Thank you. That will cover one of my mistakes as liquor commissioner, so I appreciate it. All right, does that...
It's being held. It's being held in the, do you want it held in the committee or held to your council?
You can hold it in the committee.
That concludes the report, Madam Mayor.
Just hold it. Thank you. All right, Planning and Development, Alderman Rainey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move approval of Ordinance 48014, the special use for Starbucks. It was approved for introduction and suspension of the rules.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve it. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Six to zero.
Six to nothing, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. P4, this was a disputed ordinance for introduction in committee. Therefore, I would like to move Ordinance 47014, granting a special use permit for a planned development at 1515 Chicago Avenue, and which requires, this ordinance requires the preservation of an elm tree and other issues associated with this project.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 47014, granting a special use...
Introduce it.
Introduce it. Oh, just introduce it. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tindham.
No.
Alderman Grover.
She's absent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burrus. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Two to four.
All right, the motion fails.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 53014, granting a special use permit for a planned development at 1515 Chicago Avenue and permits removal of an elm tree and requires other concessions by the developer.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to introduce Ordinance 53014. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Win, I mean Wilson. Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover, I mean Rainey.
Aye.
Sorry, it's late. Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Five to one.
Five to one, the motion passes. Thank you, Alderman. Holmes again.
Yes. Madam Mayor, on the Human Services Committee, H2, I actually have two parts. So, the Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations, we would move the first part of the proposal, which is to recommend that the city council receive the report, approve the city's Evanston animal control policy, approve a volunteer organization partnership policy, direct the city manager to create an animal shelter fund, to introduce an Ordinance 54-014, creating the Evanston Board of Animal Care and Control, six to receive and file reports from the Corporation Council, and seven to provide directions to the city manager regarding the city reimbursements of costs regarding volunteer rescue activities. I would move approval of that first part.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first part of the Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations.
Now, for the second part?
Do them both, okay.
I'm going to, okay, the second part has two pieces to it. One was that if CARE to negotiate with us, that would be one piece, and if they declined to negotiate. So I just need to make a couple of statements on behalf of the committee. We certainly, I believe, because CARE didn't, couldn't, wouldn't, I'm not even sure what, but they never said yes or no. We asked several times if they wanted to negotiate. There was a statement made last night by Mrs. Loveinger, representing the board, which said that they preferred to have everything come to the city council. We had no choice because we had no yes or no from them, and we have to assume then if they did not want to negotiate with us last night. And I want to stop and say that part of this process in getting to the city council is to come to the committee. That's where we have the discussions, and that's where we try to iron everything out. Can I just come straight to the council and do that? I mean, you certainly can come to the council, but the committee has spent hours, and I think that we have tried really, really hard. I feel very good about my part in it. I have tried, I have listened, I have tried to hear everybody's piece, but we could not get an answer from CARE. So therefore, we had to then move that CARE declined, as far as we were concerned, to negotiate a new agreement, and it is recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to issue a notice to CARE, ceasing relationships with the city at the Evanston Animal Shelter, and to work with CARE to vacate the animal shelter no later than 5:00 PM Friday, May 9, 2014, and direct the city manager to issue a request for qualifications to volunteer animal organizations to express interest in working with the Evanston Animal Shelter no later than Friday, April 25, 2014. And then lastly, to direct the city manager to return to the city council on April 28, 2014, with the status report of these activities.
All right, so you're moving that first, and that's your second part?
That was the second part, yes.
All right, it is... You seconded. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to pass Alderman Rainey, did you want to... It's been moved and seconded to pass the first and second part of the Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations as outlined by Alderman Holmes. Alderman Rainey, did you...
First of all, the first and second proposals read by Alderman Holmes are way too complicated for me to deal with, so I'm just going to make an... for me to deal with, so I'm just going to make an appeal to CARE. I know my name has been invoked several times regarding the reason this has all happened, because of the poodle. I think everybody can make errors in judgment, and I think on that case, the case of the poodle, an error in judgment was made, but I don't think that poisons the organization from top to bottom. I think that this city is going to be in serious trouble if we disconnect and eliminate all contact and associations with CARE. I'm not distinguishing, and I don't care if volunteers do distinguish between CARE and the CARE Board. The CARE Board and the CARE volunteers, in my mind, are one and the same, and I respect every second they have put into this organization. I guarantee you, if we, if we disassociate with CARE, the animal shelter will be in trouble, and that means the animals in this town. Alderman Fisk cannot take care of all the animals at the Evanston Animal Shelter, and neither can a few of you who are going to remain as volunteers. Now, if the CARE faithful remain as volunteers, then CARE probably, then the shelter probably will survive. But we are making a terrible mistake. I once equated this to a similar situation. This town, many years ago, had the most wonderful tenants' organization, absolutely amazing. It wrote the landlord-tenant ordinance, it was called to Chicago to share its expertise and help Chicago write their landlord-tenant ordinance, it wrote, it wrote the ordinance having to do with condo conversions in this town. It wrote it. And along came a couple of dissatisfied members of the organization. They undermined it, they went to the city, they destroyed the reputation of the organization, and guess what? There has never been a tenants' organization in this town since then, never. But the head of the tenants' organization went to Chicago and runs a tenants' organization there. That's going to happen here. This is going to be, this is going to be an animal control facility where we're going to go out and distribute raccoon cages and, you know, pick up dangerous animals, and that's going to be about it. I am absolutely convinced of that. And I really, really warn this city about taking back money that was raised by CARE. I believe most of that money was raised by CARE to provide for an additional, for an enhancement of the animal shelter. Whether it's paid for in this town or elsewhere, I'm not sure, but if people want their money back, and they can prove they gave it, ask for it back. But I certainly don't want this city grabbing money that was raised by a not-for-profit for the care of animals. I know we all have different opinions on this, I just want to share mine. I believe that they have done a wonderful job, a wonderful job, and I think we're all going to be sorry when we make this move. I know there are people in this room and on this council who dislike CARE and their board. I don't dislike CARE and their board, I think the board has done, they've kept this organization together for years. It is not easy to keep, to keep an organization of this kind together, it is just not easy. And these people, I mean, they are, they are dealing with feces, they are walking dogs in the winter, they are doing it on weekends and at night. How many of us are going to go over and do that? I mean, maybe Alderman Fisk will, and maybe Alderman Tendem will, but I know Alderman Burrus and Alderman Rainey won't be over there, we might write a check.
I have two at home already.
Okay, all right. And all my cats are dead, but that had nothing to do with it. But it's a hard job, it's a hard job taking care of a kitten at home, much less feeding 16 in a shelter. So I just warn us, we are going to be left holding the bag, and I'm gonna, I just cannot believe you will do this. I think we ought to say to CARE, you've got to negotiate, you've got to negotiate with the city manager, this is not over until it's over, and I urge you to do that. There's no pride here, you've got to negotiate, you've got to do it.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no one wishes to discuss this any further, City Clerk, I think you'd better call the roll, this is controversial enough.
Is the first part or second?
We're doing...
First part or second part?
You want to do the first part?
No, I'm saying, we're going to do it...
I think Alderman Holmes made a motion to do...
It has, it has to...
The first and the second together.
Well, I mean, we wanted to...
Leaving out the middle paragraph.
That is, well, yeah, it's actually three paragraphs. We're doing, the first paragraph is just the animal control, I mean, the policy, and I'm assuming that we all agree on that, so if we can do that first and then the second part, is that, Alderman Rainey, is that...
All right, you want to do just the first paragraph?
Uh huh.
All right. The motion is to approve H2 Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations, the first paragraph. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second part. I did a motion.
We did a motion, I read.
On the second part, all right, so...
On the third paragraph is where we...
All right, the motion in front of us is to vote yea or nay on H2 Evanston Animal Care and Control Operations, Paragraph 3. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
It's just to negotiate a...
This is if CARE declines to negotiate a new agreement, it is recommended that the City Council authorize the city manager, et cetera.
Right, but we're assuming there's a possibility for negotiation.
Well, I, and can I ask a question, Alderman Rainey? And I, you know, I don't know, maybe this is not, I just, I'm asking a question.
I just watched it on TV.
I know, I know you watched it, and I am going to say again, I looked right out of an audience last night, and I ask, I'm saying again, we did not make this, and we're, and there was no favoritism or anything in terms of, did CARE want to negotiate with, with us? I mean, that would have been the recommendation, that was not. And I even, you see, when I have, when I get really upset and frustrated, I have to go to the scriptures, so I even reminded them last night, came from Revelations 3:15 and 16, if you want to read it. You have to either be hot or cold. If you're lukewarm, then you get spit out. So that's exactly what happened last night. So I, I'm sorry, but, you know, if you want to, I mean, I don't know how we can make them negotiate, we cannot make them negotiate. If they don't, if they don't want to negotiate, how can we make them do it? I just don't understand.
So what, what is...
Alderman Rainey, it's Alderman Fisk's turn. Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Last night, we did at committee decline to negotiate further with CARE, that was, that was the vote, and that was after many, many times, at many, many meetings, of asking CARE to come up and step to the microphone and state what their position was, and they refused to, or they declined to do that. It's been a very frustrating process to go through from the start. That's the, that position that they've taken, it's time for us to make a decision. I think if we decide at this moment that we're going to go back and negotiate with CARE, we basically start off at the beginning of where we were a year ago. And too much time has passed, and I think it's time to take our vote.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I mean, I can tell, but I, so we're voting on not to negotiate, is that, is that the issue?
We didn't, they declined to negotiate.
I'm just saying, the motion on authority...
Right.
Not so...
Well, there is one other possibility, we could amend it so that they could apply to be, they could apply...
Oh, absolutely, they can do that.
They can apply, all right. Alderman Tendem?
I think I'll pass, I've, I've said a lot, and I think that, you know, to put the community through any more discussion on this topic would be cruel, and certainly, if there's an RFP, everyone can apply.
Alderman Wilson?
I agree with that, Alderman Tendem, and I'm not part of the committee that's heard so much of this, but again, like Alderman Rainey and others, I've done my best to follow along. And to me, the really unfortunate thing is that it's become, it's become a two-sided thing, and it's something that really, instead of focusing on what's in common, and there is one thing in common, it's, it's become unbearably divisive. I also do believe that we have legitimate and significant concerns that were raised, and I didn't perceive that there was an appropriate degree of responsiveness to those legitimate and significant concerns. It's the lack of responsiveness that, that has persuaded me...
Absolutely.
...to ultimately decide to vote how I'm going to vote. I sincerely hope that the volunteers and everybody will take the opportunity to regroup and get this thing back on track. In my mind, the two big things are the euthanasia rates and the extraordinary amount of money that's sitting there. Over the years, I've heard stories, they're wonderful stories, people bring food, volunteer to bring these things to CARE for the animals, the amount of dedication, time spent is phenomenal, and I can't possibly express my personal appreciation for that, and I think everybody up here and everybody in the community is deeply appreciative and grateful for all of that hard work. And so this is, it should be viewed as an opportunity, and I hope that everybody will look at this as an opportunity to regroup and work together and get this back on track.
Thank you, seeing, oh, Alderman Burrus.
I apologize for not being at the Human Services meeting last night, I was, I was out of town. I basically followed this very closely and wanted the negotiation back and forth, I think we are in a situation where we're, where CARE is gone, I don't know that we have another entity to come directly in place and take over, so that's a little alarming. But again, this is something I raised several weeks ago, and it's become CARE against the city, or CARE against someone else, and the city has been blaming CARE. And again, whatever entity, let's say CARE does, whatever entity comes in, we need to take more responsibility. I think the, the operation on the city side, the animal warden side, has been sorely lacking, and it's not, basically have said, oh, it's not our responsibility, and they've not taken any sense of responsibility, like, oh, it's CARE's fault. The city at some point needs to step up and say, we had a lot to do with what went wrong here, and I have not heard that from this city. I have not heard this from the animal warden, I have not heard from the chief of police, it's just been a lot of, oh, it's all their fault, and I think that is wrong. Thus, when we come back with a new group, we need to be partners in this, with that group, not us and them. So again, I just think it's been a really, a disservice to the, to the volunteers. I do have issues with the board, I do separate the board from the volunteers, I think the board has been non-responsive. There's been a little bit of back and forth, but really, an honest effort, I haven't seen that, and the head of the board has been almost silent unless we begged her to come and speak in, to the committee. So I think we're in an unfortunate situation, but again, we need to take some responsibility for that.
Thank you. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm ultimately responsible for the staff side of this, and so Alderman Burrus, I will step up, and it's my responsibility, the chief of police, the animal warden work for me. I'll, I'll share my views of this, that, you know, up until the time that Alderman Rainey and Alderman Fisk had the opportunity to rescue a dog, this issue was not on our radar screen. We were dealing with lots of other municipal issues, and I think it was at that point that I directed the police department to really take a look at how it was operating, to provide the necessary support for the animal warden. I think Ms. Tekler has done an outstanding job over the last couple of years, facing some very difficult times. However, with that said, we still have lots to do. Regardless, whoever we partner with, we still have the issue of a facility that is not appropriate for the work that needs to be done, and we need to rapple with that as a city-owned property, and we need to rapple with that. But for what has come to this point, I am responsible, and we are, there are things we have done better in the recent past and will continue to do moving forward.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
I just want to say this, and particularly to you, Alderman Burrus, because you were not there last night, and I think that we tried as a committee to take responsibility for that by saying that we know that there's fault on all parts, so, and that's why I can say and look at the CARE people and say, I figure that we did, we did as fair as we could do as a committee. I can't speak for everyone, but I know that we were trying very, very hard to let them know that nobody's blaming, at least, many of us are not blaming, nobody's blaming anybody for anything, there's fault on both parts, but we have got to, you've got to say, you have to say something, you can't just sit silent, and that is what has gotten us to this place, is just being silent, over and over and over again, not being responsive, and I think Alderman Wilson said that best, when you're not responsive, people have to assume you don't want to, to negotiate with us, and that's, that's what got us here tonight.
Thank you, seeing that no one else wishes to dis, oh, Alderman Burrus, sorry.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Bobquitz's comment about no one was paying attention to the animal warden or animal situation. I would respectfully disagree. We had a dangerous dog ordinance, I want to say it was two or three years ago, and there was many light shed on what was happening at the, the facility, and the lack of response about dangerous dogs, and a lack of response about dogs in the community that were barking or causing mischief, and we did have an opportunity, and we did pass an ordinance, but nothing changed at, at the shelter or with the, the services of the animal warden, and it wasn't until this really came to a head that, and people were here with t-shirts on and yelling at each other and lining up, did we make a choice to do something? We had an opportunity to make a choice two, three years ago, when we knew there were problems and we chose not to do it, that is my point.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. I just want to make one point, I, I'll make it quick, quickly. You know, we keep, I think most of us look back to that corner on the, on the left-hand side to us when we talk about CARE, but CARE, this is CARE too. You don't have to be wearing red to be CARE. These folks are volunteers, former volunteers, future volunteers, as you may be as well, but all these folks, I mean, pretty much everybody who isn't the press or monitoring us from the League of Win of Voters, is a member of CARE at this point, and I respect all of you, and thank you all for your, your hard work and hoping you'll continue with us, but we're all CARE, I mean, it really is, and it's, it is the responsibility of our city government to make sure this works.
Thank you. Now, I don't think anyone wants to discuss this further, so, City Clerk, would you call the roll, or voting on H2, the second part, the third paragraph?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burrus.
No.
Alderman Fisk. Four to two.
Four to two, the motion passes. All right, human. Do we have economic development? Who's the chair?
Oh, no, I'm not, but I think she's here.
Alderman Rainey, would you be the chair?
I was the last chair.
Thank you. Could you handle this for us?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're asking that Resolution 12, RF14 be held till April 28. This is a matter of 48-month, 50/50 cost-sharing, or tax-sharing program. We have a few neighborhood issues that we need to resolve and want to talk to Aldo Barron about, and we plan on passing this and, and, you know, dealing with...
about, and we plan on passing this and, you know, dealing with those issues in the meantime, and passing this matter at our next meeting.
Thank you very much. All right.
No motion for adjournment.
No, we've got Call of the Wards, Rodney, try. Next on the agenda is Call of the Wards, Alderman Fisk.
Okay, I need to message that.
Yeah.
No report.
All right. Why does mine say begin with Alderman Fisk? Thank you, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to announce that there will be a sixth ward meeting on Thursday, April 24, 7:00 PM. The meeting will be at Three Crowns Park at 2323 McDaniel, in the first-floor multi-use, multipurpose room, and the agenda will come out shortly. I'd also like to make a couple referrals to the staff about a couple of things that were spoken about tonight. With regard to the elm trees, I do think it would be advisable to look into the idea of getting guarantees on some of the failed elms. I don't know that after last year, our effect, the effective rate is still 99 percent, because we did have some that seemed to die throughout the summer, it was a difficult summer, but I think that would be a good thing to look into. And secondly, I would like to direct the city manager to pursue a conversation with CARE in terms of the outstanding, the money in the account. By their own admission, some of that money was raised for the Evanston Animal Shelter in a fundraiser or event that was designated a fundraiser for the building renovation or addition. So, I think it's really, as a city, we need to do this, I don't know what legal grounds we have to stand on, but I do believe that we need to do this for the taxpayers of Evanston and those who have contributed quite a bit of money, a whole lot of money, to the shelter, so.
Madam Mayor.
City Manager.
Alderman Tindham, I think it would be appropriate to put that issue on the agenda, I don't know that, I think the scope of the request goes beyond the Call of the Wards issue, so if you wouldn't mind, we'll put it on the future agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Thank you. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.